What happened?
She's gonna go out to party and totally celebrate.
If you have a horn, you can sleep now.
My ears did flip up. I mean, I think that's exciting that somebody wanted to come on.
It is, it is.
Yes, they know.
Absolutely. Change the guard.
Can you get them to do this?
Is there a way when opening?
Way too many people.
It seems like everyone gets their start on this one.
No, the senior commission is always opening. Oh, yeah. I think this is the first time we've had nine people since I've started.
They both?
Thankfully, they're in the afternoon. They're one o'clock on a Wednesday. They're not quick meetings.
It's a call to order for the parking lot meeting for April nineteenth, like two thousand twenty-two. The citizens are here. Informational.
Um, it's just the new.
And rent notes.
Yeah. The new county offices.
All good. I think it's. Long time coming at this point. I mean, it was maintained.
We're just going to have discussions on how can we possibly allow somebody to attend remotely because.
Oh, yeah. When I first started, it was like the whole idea thing that like Naomi had attended via phone, so she didn't count as a vote, and they had to present her vote for that.
That's Robert's rules there. He actually attends, so we had to like. They counted towards the meeting, but they couldn't actually vote.
Well, those were written how long ago?
Yeah, but I think the executive orders or the state statute basically referenced Robert's rules. I think they changed it while the COVID. You know, the state was allowed more of a low participation.
All right. Let's go on to review of our meetings. Motion?
A motion.
All in.
Hi.
Direct support. I have a very short one still.
Yeah. Uh, we've been drowning this week. This friend's been out sick and personally, he's decided to start up. Um, so Little League's opening day will be Saturday. Soccer starting practices next week. Um, so like guys have been busy getting all the fields ready. Um, summer camp applications, we extended the deadlines ended this month because uh. We didn't have enough applications to hide the number of staff we wanted to hire. Yeah, so we actually put it up on Indeed, uh, so we've been getting a lot of residents to set that way too, so.
Cool.
Uh, what do we have now for? Is it fifteen? Maybe it keeps going up in a way. I think this might be fourteen this year.
Yeah, for your, for your own period, right?
Yeah. Yes, we did all four years, but it was gonna raise that once. It all knocked out. Um, Mike uh, he rolled area and fertilized all the athletic fields. Uh, he finished top to addressing Defta. He did all the seeding. Uh, field looks great, actually, then they cut it shorter for the first time. Actually, I think they cut it again like that strip. Um, they went out with just the, I think, the six foot mower. They're not using the wing mowers on Defta. They're gonna use their six foot mower and cut it at that inch and a half. The wing mowers would kind of scale it at that level, so. And then they're gonna try and do it twice a week. Love it. We're gonna see a little transition period when the, the dry grass will kind of get. Showed, not showed down, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, it will be cut so short that it'll kind of die out and then the blue grass will take over in its spot because it likes to get a shorter cut. Um, I was excited to see the grass germinate this weekend, so.
So, uh, what soccer using these in Defta, they using Clark as well?
Uh, Will's working with me. We're gonna have U fourteen on Defta when he absolutely needs it because we want to try and keep people off this spring as much as possible. Um, so Clark's is a little wet though. Um, so knowing that, you know, U four teams probably have to play at Defta. I asked them today if maybe they want to use these uh, like sneakers for practices instead of cleats just for the first three or four weeks. Prevent really carrying the new grass up. Obviously, not for games, I think you can wear the cleats, but see if you can, you know, pass that out to the parents to see if they'll be like.
The younger guys are all part two.
Uh, no, so they're usually, they were gonna do three age groups on Defta. Um, so instead, they were gonna have two fields on Clarks, two fields on Purdy. Now, we're gonna do um. Three fields on Clarks. And then we put a U twelve at the middle school for them. Um, because they're not doing lacrosse, um, so there's plenty of space because I'm gonna have a full field out there and keep it away from the pond.
So U sixty, U eight's gonna be on the Clarks?
Um, I can't remember off the top of my head. I think Clarks is a U twelve and then a U. Eight on the dry half, and then I think it's a U. Or no, it's a U fourteen with a, a U ten. U eight, and then the upper field will have. The U. Twelve with two U tens within it instead of just. So we moved the U ten on the Clarks off of Defta and then U twelve to the middle school. And then we're just gonna hope that we'll use Clarks for the U fourteen when possible.
Does the middle school get much attention in the way of the grass there?
That's more to bed.
That's more to bed, alright.
We, except for the enclosed baseball field. This is Little League, we go through this every summer. Um, we only know one field, or that's the field we know. Or that goes the rest of it. They're always asking why the field in the middle of the field looks obscene. And outskirts are four feet tall and thick and fested. That's a battle we'll do in summer.
Not, not, we used to, in the past, I guess, like just a couple four though. Where it was, we really couldn't do work on.
Oh, I've run middle school?
Yeah.
Um.
We lined, right? Because we.
We lined, yeah.
Yeah, so we do all the lining and the field setup. Um, and then we're responsible for both the infield, so like the clay and the infield mix. And then we only know that fenced infield.
That's what it was. If we needed it lined, we would have you were done at the time call over to the board of ed to make sure we mowed it times so that we could line it.
Okay. Yeah. Hopefully, they're on a more regular schedule. I know there's an issue with COVID because they were short staffed apparently, but. I don't know if that's just because of COVID since every, every mid-summer when the kids eat the grass. Um, what else? I think there's something else I wanted to say. But it. That was. Did it add it?
Exeter and the Humpland well?
Oh, yeah, the Exeter and the Humpland well. Lot more kids than last year.
Okay.
It's uh, with a lot like a normal year. Yeah. You know, we ended up putting more eggs out, um, to put less out for the older kids. Like I worked, it was like, what's going on? It was like, it almost was like a beehive. They were like swarming, the high school kids were trying to throw more eggs out. They were like swarming the box, like they couldn't even get it out of that box, like throw it away.
Wow, wow. Good times, okay.
But now definitely. Yeah. It'll come to be a nice one.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
How are, how are um, class moments? Are, are class moments good? Like classes full?
Oh, yeah. Actually, Dan said he was opening up another second session.
Wow.
Because uh, they're, they're like all three of them are full of the waitlist. I'm hoping they're gonna have another, another session on that.
It's awesome.
Um, again, we got some events coming up at the Duaplon's May first. It's the next, the big one. That's the regional event. For trouble. And then we got a day is June eleven. Let's see, um, creatures and stuff like that.
Um, so, yeah, I have a motion there.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Sports that needed, old business. This is probably exciting stuff. Two to five year old place. This is gonna be, it gets very.
Yeah, this is the Don and you pop it on technically. Um, so I got two quotes, uh, so there's two uh, pieces of equipment for the. Four to five year old, two by year old age group that met um, the game time uh, funding opportunity. Um, the other one was way above what the hard cut funds um, that we had set aside. Um, so it is one that was within the amount. Hopefully, the next thing will be to talk to the mayor and still push that to get approved because we have to order the equipment, I believe, by the end of May to get that. Discount, yeah. Um, which is what's seven thousand five hundred dollar discount, which is. Not off the twenty-one thousand, not like these support.
The comments say that the order must be received by March twenty-seven.
Um, no, I think. We're.
On um, on the. Option one, the game time option one estimate under comments?
Oh, yeah, no, that's, I think, something different. Um, it might have been that the uh, the, the thing I filled out had to be done by the end of March, which already did. That it's not a grand, but like a entrance to the funding.
Okay.
Um, because it's like end of, it's either end of May, it might even be June, but I think it's end of May, you have to order the equipment. It has to be delivered by December. To meet that, that funding. So that's like the top view. Yeah, so I only included that one option because the other one was way beyond the, the pricing. Um, so I think that's the top view they did. Uh, we can choose all the colors. Uh, there, they have like uh, themes you can choose from, or you could just, you know, create your own uh, colors scheme if you want. Basically. Is it blue or gold?
I was just thinking that.
Might be. I think this is for, yeah, this is for the equipment and the installation of the equipment, and then the second one is for uh, the safety surfacing.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yep. Um, so overall, it'd be fifty thousand, hundred and ten dollars and twelve cents, which is under the fifty-five they wanted for hard cut.
Okay.
So hopefully, if that gets approved, we can move forward. Wouldn't switch on the playground. Actually makes people happy because.
That's a late time, that's a late time on a happy order.
Uh, I had to look, I know that was an issue in the past because with the whole funding thing, you had to order it and receive it uh, by a certain time. I mean, I guess it was like, it wasn't even like possible, so they actually took the funding down, but now um, they're kind of caught up with their lead times. I guess the big thing would be safety surfacing. It's a, I don't know if it's the rut, not the rubber, but the, the catalyst or the rubber that they use to harden the surface. It's like in very high demand right now. Um, that I gotta talk to them too, because I think the equipment and everything is under a state contract, so we wouldn't have to worry about going up a bid, but the safety surfacing, I don't believe is under any uh, state contracts. I don't know, why does it put a bid a bit, but basically, it's like, this is like, who has it right now?
Yeah.
It's, you know, basically what they go with every time, just for the best material.
So what's our fallback here? I mean, supply chain is somewhere everywhere, right? So if we punch the order at the end of May. And if, for whatever reason, doesn't get delivered by December, what happens?
I love the ask, because I mean, I would think that would be, so the safety surfacing doesn't matter. It's the playground equipment.
Yeah.
Um, I would assume since game time's providing the funding, that if they're gonna be running late, uh, I know the delivery that they would maybe make an exception, but. I'll have to talk to the rep about that, because I know he's, that was kind of his, he was talking about how in the past, that's why they kind of, it wasn't like possibly used to funding, it was, you couldn't get the equipment and I would need the lead time. Requirements.
If they're in May, then December should be okay, but.
Yeah. He said they're back to about, I think it's like a two month. Uh, for like the delivery. Luckily, we just had to order by the end of May, don't have another. Their assets. Okay.
Um, are we paying sales tax on this or not?
No.
Okay, so we're taxing them?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think taxes, I don't think they include it.
He said that it's not included and then we may have to provide their tax ID.
Yeah, that's, that's, we have like a cover letter that says, the statute that states that the council taxes. Has our federal, whatever that E number is in place of the tax. E number. Yeah. So basically, the funds aren't approved yet from town council, but I figure we. Be ready for when they do decide to approve it, seeing as it is time sensitive and not the cost specifically. Playground proposal.
Okay, so instead of motion to. Acceptance of an installation plays gate.
Can we do that if we, if the town hasn't approved? I think that's what Star was saying, we have to wait for the town.
No, 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 no. No, the ability of stating is based on their approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, sending their approval.
Because they have to approve the, the fund, but we have to approve the installation of the project. So if we approve the project, that way when they approve the funds.
Okay.
So if it's motion to install, that goes to finance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so it's a motion to install to five year old place here. Pavilion fee, oh, it's jacked up, seventy-five bucks.
I just believe a lot of things.
See if our demand was, yeah.
I think I did it the way we said to do it last week.
No, like it's something tighter. One page, one page only needs.
The one benefit of having zooms is like, I could look back, but we didn't zoom last week, so I couldn't look back.
Now you have three, three areas, categories more than. I, I mean. You have the option.
Yeah, it's very fair.
So it's necessary. Always necessary.
Yep.
So that's, that's.
And the pole barns and the pavilion at town green?
I didn't add those yet, um, especially because there is no new pavilion at town green yet, but.
Yeah.
And also, the pole barns kind of under construction, so I don't want to put it on and have people. Right now, we're not ready. Right now, they're, they're the. They're picking up all the coasts and. Like replacement view of all that do with that, the forest. I like it, it's all on one page. Yeah. It's like a pain in the butt, it's like someone's packing.
You go.
Here, here, and then you see pages where, oh. During very last day, as you're saying. No, we've all like, because we have the major COVID reopening number, they don't do that anymore. I mean, it's kind of one line in the, then the agreement, same like, you know, possible risk of exposure to COVID.
I don't think it's ever come up before, but we say it's, this is exclusively for park pavilion rentals. And we, and not the whole park. We've never received a request to rent the whole park, have we?
We've had people where.
They assume.
Rent the building.
I know, yeah, and they assume they've got the whole park. Yeah, but we're never, we're never gonna.
No, and I think it, it said that, we tell people that, like, when they ask, I think there's been once or twice where they, like, can you have the whole park, like, a park, a public in the pavilion? We made sure.
It's down there. It's, yeah, we did add, it's, I was saying, we, we're not gonna offer an option for a whole.
Because I mean, technically, it's.
A public, yeah.
You would have to rent, you know, the pavilion or in the soccer field and then both the baseball fields. It would get pricey if you really wanted to do it.
Right.
Then again, you can't stop them on like the hiking trail or.
Yeah, exactly. I didn't think it ever came up, other than people making indirect assumptions, but.
Yeah. The bright silver, groomzilla.
Yeah.
We do have bucks, I know. Used to be some men's leagues that would play on Defta.
Um.
I think Dodgers kind of play, I don't think they really rented it.
Um.
I don't know if that's still standing or not.
No, they are right now. I did, I remember we went there for a meeting, it was like the youth pickup night. I haven't noticed any men's league. I know for like baseballers and men's over thirty, but they are actually doing the process of getting the permit. These are like the go on Sundays, and paying that ten or twenty dollars.
Um, this may be a. Why isn't the league, um, why isn't this line under here? Or can be twenty-five and twenty-five, because this one's already gonna be twenty-five. But.
Um.
Organizational.
It's for all locations.
Well, yeah.
Because uh, it's like the, the Murray and Perry are for like taxpayer, not like, nonprofit. And then always we had that before, boys, youth leagues, boys scouts, schools classes, etc. come by, which honestly, might feel easy way to see from anyways.
Yeah, okay. Leagues we've never paid.
We've never, yeah.
Yeah.
Surely, we're trying to pay today, and then it's truly. Get them there, point. So actually, we probably need that. Sometimes the boy scouts will pay for.
I think, you know, because sometimes they have the nets, right? So I think it's, it's okay to have it on, you know, and you just hear the gatekeeper.
Well, why don't we just put like a call for fee or something? Or like contact for fee, because that way you can just be like, well, you're front on charge to you. Or if you have a big, or if you have a big thing.
Well, it's kind of have that business, religious organizations, profit-making event, etc. That's a separate fee basis. These vendors or member attendees, spectators and not participants.
Awesome, yeah, so even though it might be boy scouts, if it's profit-making, he can. And you assess it as a fly. That's reasonable. In most cases, they're gonna get a comp. Situation where something else is going on. It's easier to. Give it for free. Yeah, just say, no, you're gonna be charged this. And so keeping the charge there is probably easier than.
Sorry, this is when it says free.
They can be like, yeah, you're taking a fine, aren't you? Okay. Any other statements, questions, comments?
Um, I mean, this isn't, doesn't have to do with the fees, but on the back, um. Do you guys like look at this and?
If they fill it out. Half the people don't. It's usually, that's for why, like, say, Lee is doing their, you know, big fundraiser. They would actually, they actually check it out because they have, check it out, because they actually have insurance, so they fill it out with their, you know, insurance amounts. And then they'll check out, like, they need water, electricity, toilets, uh, for a lot of their events.
So when. When they need toilets, we provide the quarter pines?
They're there already.
Um, but don't we only do that through the women ones?
Yeah, but nobody really rents it in, say, dec- end of December. Well, so like the town green, the quarter pine is there until like December, or should we put, we leave that one there because of the tree lighting, uh, till after that event. Um, if need be, like, if say, end of March, someone's having an event, we'll pull the quarter. To get it in place. As long as, you know, it's a week earlier too. Uh, just so it's in place for the rental. Uh, but usually, like, if it's December after they didn't pull for the year, um, like, we basically say, you can rent it, but there's no facilities, like, welcome to pay to have one brought in or just build out it.
For the firemen and EMTs, are we arranging that then? Or is that something they arrange themselves?
They would have to go through the chief.
Okay.
Um, I think it's more just a way to, you know, assess if it's another fee, you know, if you're charging for an event.
Um, with. Uh, didn't the food pantry, when they got converted to the food pantry, didn't they put in a bath, put a bathroom in the pole barn?
Yes.
But that's not gonna be open for.
No.
So.
It's an incinerator toilet.
Okay.
Because there's no, uh, septic.
Okay.
Or running water.
It's an incinerator toilet? Your members, they were gonna have. I remember there was no septic, I couldn't remember what the solution was.
Incinerator toilet. Only works when it's buried, so it's a crisp.
There's no running water there either, is there?
Well, I mean, we have water at a stick it, but there's none in the filter.
Oh.
There was, but then they disconnected it. Uh, when they were doing a whole bunch of things and separating from the church and, yeah.
Got a little complicated.
Yeah.
I was just thinking that with the additions and the upgrades of the town green, that maybe sometime in future.
Just some of these.
Make it possible to have bathroom facilities there.
The sewer.
The sewer lines, yeah. The issues, it's uh, there's no sewage, and you can't get septic. I think what was there is that they said it's gotta go when they looked at it.
I thought they caught the line because it was on the property that was sold, wasn't part of.
Yeah, so there was a.
And it couldn't be rented, there were no new locations. Right.
Yeah, they had to have a new, uh, study done. It, there was two holding tanks, there was the gray water and the freshwater. Uh, both tanks were on the other, the path that was sold, so they actually had to dig them up and remove them. Yeah, that would be a possibility, because it would be great to have bathrooms there.
Looking at you.
Me and Russell are looking at like self-contained.
Yeah.
Prefab concrete bathrooms, but.
Why isn't, we have an agriculture high school, why don't we have composting toilets? Yes, yes, they composting, they don't know. Just a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Remember in the agriculture high school, but you couldn't get some of our church, so it's. Yeah.
I think there's also still ledge light, like leaching field knots that you have to go through, which was the other issues. Yeah. That was the main. Yeah, it's like the old tape there, what they would allow, it wouldn't allow.
Public facility versus hiking trails.
Yeah. You know, if they look at the volume and all that. Plus, I think it's technically wetlands, that whole, what is that, a parking lot around there? Which is another issue with the septic tank there.
I think the other thing that's a lot of times, and it does, is it's all state-run, it's not.
Yeah, the states, so it, the state parks. Interesting solutions.
So motion to approve. Policy for going permit, for change to permit. Just second. Just a second.
Second.
David.
I'm.
Let's see how fast. My neighbor.
Uh, I don't see him.
We're not gonna steal it.
Is this like, bathhouses in baths, but?
Without that, yeah.
I haven't seen this yet, so I haven't heard about this yet. I haven't seen it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, my house used to have tons of.
Always have.
Yeah, growing up. Were five of them flying around all the time.
Especially if you have no representation as well, because.
Yeah.
You all have heard about that, that's not actually. Table two, fifth year. failing partially.
Yeah, I mean, because I, I guess you can't really do the proposal. I also don't know where, what I used to try and do myself. He called me and left me a message, and then Dick leaves me this phone number to call him back, so I called the troop leader, it's like, yeah, your, Wes got left me a message, but he didn't give you a number to call him back at.
I have this problem, um, younger interns, like the undergrads, they assume that everybody's, you're calling a cell phone. So when they, I've gotten messages on my office line too, and they're like, I don't know who this is, and there's no number.
Oh, he said his name and everything. Is he gonna give you a call back as soon as he can? I was like, I was like, yeah, look at what, whatever it was.
Exactly. They assume that everything's a cell phone, they don't know.
Who's the troop leader?
Uh, it's, uh, Justin DeBray, he was laughing, he was all unknown, but it's, then he emailed me after that.
These days.
But it does sound, it looks, it sounds like a good project.
Cool for this next, next one. Any comments or?
I was wondering if we were gonna get, I mean, the Tri-Town Trail is still under our purview and.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten an update from them in a while, right? Like, one of their members coming to that, or meetings, it's probably about a good six to twelve months. I don't think we've pretty much discussed this since last summer.
Well, that's a long time.
Or.
Yeah, so we're, we're kind of waiting at this point for the grant to get signed. Didn't really made progress going any further from the Spicer. Um, so the grant will give money to look at options to move forward.
Hmm.
Uh, it's not officially, I'm waiting to have that signed from the state, actually, we need to move the Tri-Town Trail on it. Drive over, go forward. But I mean, I'm sure though, if you want, have them come and present.
Yeah, look, I think it's.
Always was it.
They, they reached a point where they, they went past um, the barn. Opened up that, that's really nice when they did there.
That was a nice big loop.
I think that was the whole to get there, and that, or wait for grant, approval to go around things.
There you go. Yeah. Um.
There's trees that have to come down, but they're just trying to get E J out there and look at.
It's like some work has been done, like some trees have been like.
Conservation.
Yeah, so we need E J to come in, there's like, maybe four widow makers that are older, have, but they're like crossing over the trail, it's a little concerning.
I have, there's one of those at Whitehall, so, um, there's somebody on, um, uh, the conservation commission meeting brought up the, um, like, the trailhead, the Tri-Town Trail is overgrown, they didn't know, like, how to get it maintained.
The one in Precedent or?
Yeah, well, no, it was like.
Well, right, right at the, right, right for the part of the deals right there, across from the person. Park, and I mean, I, and I actually asked about that afterwards, I mean, you know, from the land use, you know, aspect of, you know, that, I mean, the conservation came up with a plan and they wanted to, obviously let that, because that's under, uh, town council.
Yeah, the property.
That, that property that we're talking about, so.
Yeah, with Red Barns.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, both of them, I think, the red, the class farm and the one across.
But the one they were talking about was more across, those people, they're not being, they're all getting overgrown.
Okay.
So Everstore were waiting, they took down all my clothes, parking lot signs, somebody did and tossed them off to the side because they decided it was dry enough that they wanted to drive it to the parking lot. Um, but there's huge ruts, like, because of the mud. Everstore is actually gonna come in and put in a gravel parking lot.
Yeah, that's what I thought the mayor had said.
I'm thinking it might, it sounds like maybe even as early as May. We're kind of waiting for that, because it's, it was muddy and the cars were driving, huge ruts. Russell was, yeah, Russell's like, the ruts was even like, uh, that was bad, yeah. Like, somebody in there.
The land use ring, like, it wasn't said, can we move all that? You know, we'd obviously say yes.
Yeah, there's been questions, like, I think if, I don't know, Walter Major was, at that one point, said he might pay it once a year because he's the one farming the Clark farm.
The Clark, right.
Yeah, I think it was a, a concern that came up because you're texting about that. There is a concerted effort to, uh, to address invasive species in the town.
A bigger.
And so the, you know, overgrown areas that should be maintained are a place for invasive species to thrive, right? Yes. So. I didn't know if that was something that was under person, or if it's under town.
It's, it's like, that's like the gray area.
Yeah. Okay.
They put the trail on their ass, but how, how's all the big things, the property?
Oh, isn't that technically Preston? The, the trailhead? No, there's a, there was a parking lot on the other side. Right, I thought we were talking about a lot of Preston plays, though. That's technically Preston.
Yeah, but when you walk across the street, that's leather.
That's technically got it.
Like, the line knows, like.
Okay, I, I see what you mean.
The girl, yeah.
I assume both sides, I thought both sides of the street were technically Preston. Okay.
I think, I think technically, maybe the aprons in Preston, but as soon as you get out of property, it's.
Then it's all.
Ledger, yeah. Hmm.
Yeah. I mean, it would be easier if it was with a, a street line, so that you don't have to go back and forth, oh, this little tiny park is somebody else's responsibility.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, just like assuming it's all.
It's like for the crosswalk, they're trying to put in a crosswalk to the ledger property, and they have to go through Preston to get to crosswalk install because of the Preston section of road.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just an observation, the little road that comes into that, that's on the
Hmm.
It's seen a ton of late night cars, and, and so not the parking lot itself.
Yeah.
But I can see the veil that's there, like, all night long.
The one that gets to the other side of the pond?
Yeah.
The one that public works can't touch.
Yeah, yeah. Where, so.
I used to be one of those. You know, with my dots.
Well, that, I'm sure that's probably. It's measured over there, but it just.
Where's the access to that?
So right past Somon Hill Cemetery.
There's like that Somon Hill Road that they're in.
Because you can take a right and it go right into the, to the Somon Hill.
Backside of the Somon.
Yeah, we used to sit out there, because that was like that stone, that sun right up there, we used to sit right on there, hang out.
Because there's a house now.
Drink beer.
Yeah. I gotta figure out how to get the tree guys back there. Upper Works says you can't get back there to remove the tree that's on the ground, but Russell keeps telling me that it's quite possible to do that.
Well, on the teenagers. I don't walk into it, just to let the.
Well, Russell seems to know how to get back there, but Upper Works just keep saying, huh, we can't chump up that tree that's there, because we can't get access to it. I mean, Russell's like, this is right, this is right to it.
So pass all the Somon roots out, and you're at it. Yeah, I just, I'm assuming you see teenagers, but it's just been quite a bit as of the. And you can see it from your.
Well, we've seen a lot more activity lately with the teenagers, the vandalism.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And we're on some objections, but. Speaking of, how's East Drive or the Christie Mill part doing?
That's, that's where we've seen our increase in vandalism.
Oh.
And hopefully, with the lights, that'll change. We've received the floodlights, but that's it so far. Uh, we're still waiting on the actual parking lot lights and the poles. The poles are the most important thing, because we can't get the bases till we get the poles. Because you gotta get the bolts, they come with the poles, because they get cemented and concrete treated, so we can't order the bases till we get the bolts. But hopefully, actually, that should be next couple of weeks, because all of a sudden, be, uh, shown up that. Depending on how fast Everstore's gonna get out there.
What's our, yeah.
You mentioned regatta, do you need anything from us, or are you all set?
For the regatta? Um. That, uh, the, we might need you for our event in the morning with the regatta. That's gonna be a crazy day for us, because we have the splash and dash in the morning.
Yeah.
And then regatta day, all day after that. Uh, so I think there's a lot of help with the regatta day, and I think they're gonna take a lot of, a lot of tears that people must get for the race, so we might need help there.
I think some of our interviews. School again.
You know, like. Probably, yeah. I think she already did, because it's in the summer, so I think she already talked to Mr. Yopki, gave a list of all the upcoming.
What exactly are those person doing for the regatta day?
Maybe we're bringing leechers down to Erickson, um, where I also was looking into, like, the pricing for the shuttle bus, um, in the district. Like, I, I was gonna say, it's your. Um, it just, it's kind of a town-wide help out again. Kind of the back, they're doing a food truck festival, uh, vendors, so wherever you do the car crews.
At Erickson?
No, at Sweet Hill Farms, so like eleven to three, they'll be shuttling back and forth from John Lot and Sweet Hill Farms for that. And then three to seven, the shuttle will then start going to Erickson, and that'll be where the viewing area will be. I think we're looking, I think we're, we might sell like hamburgers and hot dogs, go grill on the grillers there.
Is any of the growth gonna get cut down to the creative view?
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, I'm actually waiting for E J, whenever he has a free day this week to go look at it.
Cool.
He wanted me to meet him on a Saturday. I said, well, if you don't have anything, you'll have to do Friday. Plus, this Saturday, we got the egg hunt, so it's all, if you can't go after the week, then this Saturday, we'll go look at trees, but he could, they'll definitely appreciate it.
Good.